...in favor of the decisions carried. We have two delegations this afternoon. First of all, we have Eric Jensen from Macklin's regarding the Robb Avenue project. So Eric, I saw you. There you are. Take your podium, sir.
Good afternoon, Mary Council. This presentation today is intended to provide a status update of the design team's activities undertaken since the December 9th media the whole meeting, as well as present the revised Robb Avenue Improvement Project Design, which the first sheet is shown here. So over the past seven weeks, the design team have received correspondence from approximately sixty local residents. We've received three alternate road cross-section concepts from the Robb Ave. community group. We've worked collaboratively with School District 71 Operations Management staff, as well as we've conducted six design team coordination meetings. On behalf of the design team, I'd like to thank the residents and the community group for providing their input on this project. We believe the design team has achieved a high-quality design that strikes a balance between the project requirements defined in the OCP and the traffic study, which were based on direction from the community as a whole, as well as local residents. I'll maybe hold off kind of going through the detail on the plan. What I'd like to do is essentially review the bulk of the comments, as previously expressed to Council. The majority of the comments could be broken down into probably eight or ten items that were kind of reiterated through a number of submissions. The first is the maintenance of the existing landscape boulevard on the south side of Robb, east of Church. So what we've done, maybe we can just see it here, so east of Church, what we've done is we've incorporated these scalloped parking areas and eliminated the full parallel parking configuration right to the terminal end at Pritchard Road. The parking scallops, a total of fourteen, were provided along the length at strategic locations, either mid-block of, for example, Church Street through to Meganway and Meganway through to Stewart Street, as well as we reviewed existing users' parking practices over the Christmas holidays on the assumption that that would likely provide us an indication as to the bulk of the parking that was being done within the boulevard. So that's where we've placed those parking pullouts. So what we've created is approximately 395 meters of 2.4-meter-wide landscape boulevard. That landscape boulevard would include grasses, as well as, you can see there, what these symbols are meant to represent is street tree planting. A total of approximately fifty-two street trees are proposed along that corridor. In working with and collaborating with Al Fraser and the Parks Department, I'm just going to jump ahead, we've come up with a couple of different species as options for replacement of the ornamental trees, and those include Magnolia Galaxy and Primus, sorry, Primus.
Al.
Chroate.
Chroate.
There we go. So those are the vision that Parks has for replacement candidates, suitable replacement candidates for the existing fruit trees along that same corridor. The existing fruit trees, number twelve, the replacement tree number represents about That moves to the second point about the ornamental street trees. Obviously, as a function of the proposed improvements, including curb gutter and sidewalk, the existing location of those ornamental street trees remain an issue and in conflict with the proposed improvements. In addition to the cursory review that Al Fraser conducted on behalf of the town as to the health of the existing ornamental trees, we had an independent arborist come back and reevaluate those ornamental trees, and it was determined that those older trees are certainly in a state of decline and that, excuse me, they're generally considered poor to fair health. That's not to suggest that all of the trees are in the same classification. Obviously, there's been some staggering of the planting. Some trees are a little bit older than others perhaps, but... The third item that was brought forward was the mature tree retention. So this essentially dovetails into a number of the comments that were received with respect to the need for a sidewalk on the north side of Robb Avenue from Church Street through to Pritchard Road. So in coordination with Shelley Ashfield and the balance of the Comox Design Team, it's been determined that that section of Robb Avenue is probably not necessarily warranted for sidewalks on both sides at this time. There is no throwaway cost to the Town of Comox by not providing it today, but what it does in the short term is alleviate a number of the tree conflicts that were otherwise presented prior to. So as a function of that, we previously envisioned fifteen mature tree removals across that road section from Church Street to Pritchard, and now that has been reduced to three. So certainly an improvement there. In addition to the mature tree preservation, obviously having an additional 1.8-meter separation from the back of the curb to those existing trees and hedges is going to assist in maintaining the integrity of the existing hedges as well. Incorporating a road centerline realignment northward was excluded from the final design of Robb Ave. for a couple of reasons. The first is that Robb Avenue needs to meet the existing road intersections at Church Street, at Stable Place, at Meganway, and at Stewart Street at the existing locations. And to deflect the horizontal road alignment, north or south, mid-block, provides or creates essentially an additional driving hazard in that the expectation is that vehicles and drivers are going to have to be maneuvering left and right to maintain the integrity of that vehicle within that designated corridor. Further to that, we wanted to try and, to the best of our ability, balance the remaining boulevard, as well as the green space behind the sidewalk evenly on both sides of the road, such that we did receive a number of comments, for example, on the north side of the road suggesting that the road should be shifted to the south, and we received a number of comments from the people on the south saying the road should be shifted to the north. So what we've tried to do is strike a balance so that the distribution of the green space behind the sidewalk as well boulevards was evenly distributed amongst property frontages. We do note that full parallel parking is required on the north side of Robb between Anderton and the school, and that's a function of both the need of the residents for on-street parking, as well as the interface and the overflow from the school on Robb Avenue. We do note that at the intersection, out of Anderton at Robb, there's quite a length of road section that is not available for parking. That's to ensure that vehicles have proper movements towards the intersection. So that's an additional twenty meters that is currently not available for parking. Providing additional parking pullouts as opposed to parallel parking would further restrict the opportunities for those residents, as well as the interface with the school. We have also incorporated, you know, at the, we have incorporated parallel parking in front of the tennis courts. This was another idea brought forward by the community group to otherwise improve safety of reducing and eliminating vehicles crossing the crosswalk and the interface with pedestrians, as well as providing an opportunity for the town to provide a green space and a buffer between those recreation facilities and the road corridor. The removal of the proposed sidewalk on the north side of Robb East, we talked about that, so that's now deferred to a later date. The maintenance of the intermittent parkings east of Church Street on the south side, so as we've gone through there, we've provided the fourteen pullouts. Incorporating bike lanes into the proposed cross-section. Per the town's transportation study, dedicated bike lanes are warranted on serial and major collector roads due to the higher levels and volumes of truck and vehicle traffic present. Robb Avenue doesn't experience the same levels of traffic, and as such, and as designated as a minor collector, shared lanes are the appropriate methodology for the bicycle people. And also, in discussions with School District 71 staff, they made it clear to us that they have, through their staff, derived a, quite an extensive education program through the school to educate the school kids on how best to navigate Robb Avenue and where the preferred access points are, access and egress points to the school are. So in moving this particular project forward and potentially this design forward, it's understood that School District staff are going to essentially reevaluate that teaching program and update it accordingly. There was several comments with respect to better management of vehicle parking within the school precincts. We have proposed additional parking signage across the school frontage to manage no parking and limited parking during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Discussions with School District Operations Staff suggest designated drop-off ceilings in the school frontage is not required, but rather School District staff will continue to manage the parents of their activities. A third crosswalk at the main school entrance. So what we've incorporated in the design thus far is a new crosswalk at this location, complete with curb bump outs, to provide both the drivers and pedestrians better sightlines, as well as the relocation of this crosswalk from its current location that's adjacent to the access to the community center, but rather shifted it about twelve meters to the west, in an effort to provide better safety with respect to vehicle movements at that intersection. We talked with School District staff about opportunities or the need for a third crossing at this location, and Operations Staff didn't support that. They didn't support that because with the provision of the second crossing and the proximity to Valentine's Lane, in addition to the sidewalk on the north side now, the culmination of those improvements are going to provide students with a safe opportunity to travel on Robb Avenue within the dedicated sidewalk corridor and a formal crosswalk from which to cross the road. Where the destination is this former maintenance vehicle access location. It's a large asphalt concrete area that can handle large groups of kids, as well as the School District is planning a significant improvement to the bicycle storage area right here. So there, the School District suggested that the inclusion of this crossing, as well as an improved location for this crossing, was certainly well above what their requirements were. Further to that, it's about 125 meters from this crossing to this crossing. The addition of a mid-block crossing or a crossing at the main, what would be currently the main entrance, that represents about a forty-meter distance. Traffic engineering suggests that the more times you ask vehicles and drivers specifically to be aware of potential crossings and the stopping, starting resulting from that, the more opportunities for conflicts with pedestrians you're going to generate. So from a traffic engineering perspective, a third crossing at this location is also not supported, so the culmination of that rationale has removed the third crossing from this particular design at this time. General vehicle speed and traffic-related concerns with respect to Robb Ave. So the design, the design includes several techniques to improve overall safety within the Robb Avenue corridor. We've added curb balding to the proposed crosswalks, as well as at Stable Place and Church Street. These curb baldings improve pedestrian sightlines and tend to minimize vehicle traffic. By implementing select parking pullouts east of Church, we've narrowed the road corridor, which also tends to reduce vehicle speeds. We've proposed flexible delineators on the southbound leg of Anderton Road at Robb Road intersection. What's currently occurring is that vehicles traveling southbound on Anderton Road, essentially drivers are just too nice, and there's an existing paint gore island in the middle of Robb, and when people wanting to turn left onto Robb are waiting, they tend to pull into the median to allow vehicles to move down the right-hand side of the vehicle, which, when you have two cars side by side, which isn't necessarily designed to handle it when kids and pedestrians are going across the crosswalk, it isn't till the vehicle actually passes the car waiting that he can potentially see the pedestrians. So these delineators will be added to the existing paint gore islands to establish and formalize and ensure single lane traffic southbound on Anderton Road. A streetlight will be added to the Robb Ave-Curch Street intersection. Currently illumination levels are not meeting current standards, so the addition of a streetlight will improve pedestrians, improve safety as pedestrians cross the street, as well as the interface between pedestrians and vehicles. Clearly, the addition of the crosswalk proximal to Valentine Lane is going to assist and alleviate the current transient crossing that happens across the school area, in addition formalizing the parking across the school frontage, from which will eliminate people parking on the boulevard, which obviously is conflicting with pedestrians that are also trying to walk on the boulevard. It'll keep the cars in the road and allow pedestrians safe access to the crosswalk, again mitigating and minimizing the interface between pedestrians walking on the road and vehicles. The traffic data that was gathered by Town Public Work Staff from December 1st to 14th resulted in eighty-five percent of the vehicles traveling at thirty-seven kilometers an hour during the school zone and forty-seven kilometers an hour during the school zone hours. So the way the traffic engineers look at this is it's the eighty-five percentile. Eighty-five percent of the vehicles are traveling within ten kilometers of the posted speed. There's fifteen percent of the people that are either above, more than ten kilometers above that or below this posted speed. Generally speaking, you're never going to get one hundred percent cooperation from users. There's always going to be outliers. There's going to be people that are driving too slow. There's going to be people driving too fast. But en masse, and reaffirmed by the traffic data that was gathered back in, it was 2010? Very same numbers. Eighty-five percent of the people are following the posted speed. We note that traffic calming measures such as speed humps haven't been currently proposed within the design, and this is based on the fact that the actual traffic speed volume, speed numbers, suggest that further traffic calming measures beyond bump outs at crosswalks, signage for school zones, isn't warranted. That's not to suggest that the Town of Comox couldn't implement additional traffic calming measures at some point in the future, and if determined that this particular design is implemented, there wouldn't be any throwaway cost to the Town of Comox by adding additional improvements at a later date. We did receive a few comments with respect to the intersection of Stewart Street at Comox Ave. and a request for a crosswalk. The traffic speed warrants do not suggest that a crosswalk is required at this location. A crosswalk at this location currently, I know that there's potentially plans for further pedestrian corridor improvements on Stewart Street, but currently there's no linkage across Stewart Street. So a crosswalk north-south across Robb Avenue does not link to a formal pedestrian corridor on the north side of the street, nor on the south side of the street. So by providing a crosswalk at this location, essentially a crosswalk is with the directing pedestrians onto the road. Without additional sidewalks or greenways or pathways, north or south on Stewart Street, a formal crosswalk would introduce the pedestrians to the asphalt surface, which again is a safety issue with respect to the interface with vehicles. We do note that every intersection is an acceptable pedestrian crossing location, whether it's formally delineated with a paint crosswalk markings, or if it's not, you know, the expectation is that pedestrians, if they do want to cross, are going to follow the rules of the road very much the same as courteous drivers or aware drivers are looking forward to see if there are pedestrians in the area that appear to want to be crossing. And finally, there were a few comments brought forward in the precinct of the school with respect to the addition of zebra paint markings to delineate the driveways from parking areas. What we have incorporated into the design is additional parking signage that will formalize the parking across the school precinct frontage. The introduction of the barrier curb in the sidewalk is obviously going to mitigate the double parking and the unorthodox parking that's currently being undertaken across that frontage. Further to that, there is the Motor Vehicle Act, the Town of Comox Bylaw Regulations, and road signage to otherwise manage where people park and where they don't park. Further to that, staff at Robb Road School are active in engaging parents about drop-off and pickup procedures and such. So the culmination of those four opportunities should be sufficient through perhaps additional enforcement to manage parking and driveway conflicts. And at this time, we're suggesting going beyond that and adding perhaps a fifth layer of defense, so to speak, to the driveways is unnecessary. So I guess in conclusion, we confirm that based on the design coordination with SD71 Operations Management Staff, the School District is extremely pleased with the proposed improvements, and this design completely addresses their four operational concerns, that being formalizing the parking across the school frontage, the installation of a sidewalk on the north side of Robb Ave., improved safety at the Robb-Anderton intersection, and the provision of an additional crosswalk across the school frontage. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this project update, and again, and on behalf of the team, I'd like to reaffirm that we believe this, an acceptable balance between the community requirements and the local residents has been established with this design update. I certainly welcome any questions or comments from...
Questions from members of Council. Council, your brief statement. Counselor Price.
Yes, and thank you, and I think it's much appreciated that changes have been made. And I'm interested to hear that you looked where people were parking on the verge and tried them.
Yeah, so essentially from Church Street through to Pritchard Ave., Pritchard Road, we spent a bit of time over the Christmas holidays marking who was parking where and how many people were parking, such that we knew that, obviously, there was a need to maintain boulevard-pollard parking at select locations, but at the same time, not everybody was using the boulevard opportunity that had been afforded to them. So what we wanted to do was try and understand who specifically was using them and whereabouts were those cars spaced along the road corridor. So based on that, there was, through the Christmas holidays, there was about eight cars typically parked within the boulevard, so we have proposed fourteen parking stalls. And again, the spatial separation of the parking areas is generally reflected with in proximity to those users, as well as trying to achieve some continuity with the mid-block, such that those outliers that perhaps don't often use the boulevard parking are not walking to the end of the block to achieve it, but rather mid-block.
Was any thought given to the idea of the permeable...
We did, yes. We explored opportunities for permeable paving within these pullout areas, and what we determined is that the initial capital cost of the installation of the permeable pavement, in concert with, based on the geotechnical report that we've conducted for the Robb Ave. corridor, we worked with Town Public Work Staff to dig a number of holes from Anderton Road down to Pritchard Road so that we understood what the subsoil surface conditions were, and it was determined that the till layer is quite shallow along the Robb Avenue corridor, so results in opportunities for groundwater infiltration are minimal. So the, I guess in summary, the initial capital cost, the premium or the initial capital cost, in concert with an ineffective opportunity for infiltration, precluded the addition of the permeable pavers. But what we have done is we've eliminated the asphalt parking in front of the Comox Rec Center tennis courts and provided an opportunity for green space there. In addition, and further to the first iteration of the design, no longer, obviously, is there full parallel parking across, you know, along the south side of Robb from Church to Pritchard. So these landscape areas are obviously going to provide a permeable opportunity for groundwater recharge, which not necessarily completely offsets the additional hard surfacing and hardscape, but it certainly minimizes that additional area.
Thank you. And with speed bumps too, I just wonder what are the downsides to them? Is it really the same cost if you decide to add them later? It would seem if you were doing a paving, paving the road, that you build them into the design and do them then would be... the design and do them then, would be-
The way that those speed humps are constructed is that essentially you've got to first pave the road, and then after, you then form the speed hump. So the speed hump gets laid on the asphalt surface. So whether that, the installation of that asphalt hump was done as part of this project or done at some point in the future, when appropriately determined, it simply gets laid on the asphalt.
So what is the downside to them though? Because they do seem to be effective. Is it just considered that they're not necessary?
Technically, they're not warranted. And second to that, it again provides additional distraction to motorists. You know, there's, for example, at this crosswalk, we've got the narrowing of the boulevard, which is going to narrow the road corridor, which is going to narrow the focus of the driver to the crosswalk. In addition to that, there isn't a need to further, there doesn't appear to be a need to further slow down. The purpose of a traffic bump is to slow people down. So, for example, what's currently happening out in front of the school is this. So if we can imagine that this side now, this side is now a curbed better sidewalk, and these vehicles are now single file both sides, and we have a narrowing effect at the crosswalk, there isn't going to be, there isn't expected to be a need for additional slowing of vehicles to allow safe passage across.
And I guess that slide just brings up too, that will we lose many of the hedges along there?
Some of the hedges will be pulled back, but yes, some of the hedges will be in conflict with the proposed improvements. So across the school frontage where we were just looking, there's one, two, three, four, five, and then one at the crosswalk, six, seven trees that are in conflict. And again, further to the presentation this evening, it's expected that McElhaney will be working with, in concert with town staff, will be approaching all of the homeowners with vegetation potential conflicts and addressing those concerns and looking at strategies to otherwise mitigate the impacts of the improvements on those hedges to the extent possible. Obviously, it should be noted that, obviously, we've done a, we've had a certified arborist do an assessment of all the trees. That assessment is a superficial assessment. Obviously, those trees that are in direct conflict with the proposed improvements, such as the tree at this crosswalk, that's clearly a removal tree. The balance of the trees that are noted here are based on his opinion, based on the size of the canopy. It appears the root zone is, has a high probability of interface with and destruction as a function of these improvements. It's until such time as the construction activities are actually undertaken and the excavation adjacent to these trees is undertaken, that the full extent of the root zone can be understood. But what we do know is that the very same arborist that's been contracted by the town to work with the contractor and will be, all of the works adjacent to mature trees and the hedges will be done under the supervision of the arborist, such that those root zones can be respected to the extent possible, and any kind of mitigating strategies can be arrived at at that time.
That's great. And just one last question. What sort of strategies have you talked about? I mean, I realize that traditionally, hedges get on the road right away because they were planted so long ago. So what sort of strategies have you thought to where hedges will need to come out?
Well, a number of the hedges, I guess the answer to your question is twofold. A number of the hedges are located within the existing road dedication. They were planted in the road dedication a number of years ago perhaps. And then a number of the hedges were planted on private property and just have expanded as hedges do, to encroach in the road dedication. Maybe I'll defer to Shelley with respect to the strategies for-
Sure, yeah. The hedges and the plantings that are within the road dedication, like as Derek was mentioning, we'll work with each property owner to let them know what the impact is going to be doing, what we're going to be removing. So if there's perils, they have a chance to dig them out or move them, or we can dig them up for them and then put them on their lot, and then they can replant them. I already had a number of homeowners who approached me on that, knowing that we're coming, so they're going to work that into this winter month while they're dormant and get them moved. Fences that are within, we'll probably work with them if they want to get them, some don't want their hedges. Some say, oh, can you take that down? So there won't be no cost to the property owners if their hedges or their plants are within the road dedication. We won't look to them to remove them at their cost. We would work them, and we would obviously have to accommodate for those costs. So those are the type of things that we'll work with the homeowners as we get closer or have a better idea of what that impact is going to be at each property.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel, or not?
Along that line, so to you, to Shelley, is there something in place that if we have to take a hedge, say it's a privacy hedge in front of somebody's property, to plant a new one back? Or are we just digging that out and leaving it open, and then it's up to the residents?
Yeah, usually we, usually they get it, like they realize once we say it's completely within our road dedication, and they're like, yep, you know, they realize that, ninety percent of them, you know, understand that, that was kind of a risk that they took. Or when they bought the house and they get their property legally surveyed, they know that they've got a lot of landscaping that's outside. It's kind of just sort of buyer beware. That'll, you know, if we had to go and replace all the hedges and put it on private, that just increased our budget or costs. So we try to work with them as best as we can to accommodate them. That's something that's reasonable for both of us. So those are sort of the negotiations that we'll kind of get into as we deal with them one-on-one.
Right.
All right. Thank you for those comments, and thank you very much for your presentation. The next delegation is Lori Kublick and Bill Henderson. If you could come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Lori Kublick, and I've lived on Robb Avenue for four years. I'm self-employed with my own gardening business in Comox and Courtney. And on behalf of the Robb Ave Community Group, I'd like to thank you for your open and transparent dealings with us on this upgrading project. We'll be brief today. Our main reason for being here is to learn about the redesign, and to express our current concerns and alternatives, and to request a public open house with a full presentation on this redesign. We appreciate your opening up the process for more input from the community, and it has been very encouraging to witness that you're listening and reflecting the community's concerns in the redesign. Thank you for the changes made to Phase Two announced in mid-December via a status update posted on the town's public website. And thank you to Derek for your information earlier tonight about this redesign. Before the agenda was published late yesterday afternoon, we had not heard if our input had resulted in any changes to the design for Phase One. Our emphasis in offering alternatives has been on retaining the existing trees and hedges in both phases of the construction, incorporating improvements to pedestrian and cyclist safety, speed calming features, and honoring the maintenance needs of the infrastructure. Our current concern with alternatives will be highlighted briefly by my neighbor, Bill Henderson, and then I'll come back with a specific request to council.
Good evening. I'm here to present the middle part of our presentation, which has to do with the recommendations that we've made to the city and town administration. Some of these recommendations have been noted in Shelley Ashford's Public Works Report, which you'll hear later on, but a number of them which we had made beforehand to the administration have not been. Also, there has been, I think, some divergence in indicating the level of support for some of these recommendations. Some of them have received a much higher level of support than indicated in the administration's report that you'll hear later. To get into the recommendations specifically, we start with the road alignment shift northward. Very happy to see that the Public Works Department proposals include an acknowledgement of that. We're not quite sure whether that's going to save the hedges on the north side for the Phase One, that's from Anderton to Church. But if they can maintain at least a seven-foot setback, not the full thirteen-foot setback, then root systems or the hedges can be saved. Not the trees, but the majority of the hedges. And that's a key point with us. We'd really like to see that happen. We think it's possible. It sounds as though from Derek's description, on behalf of McElhaney, that we are close to doing that, if not bang on with it. But perhaps that can be clarified. We're pleased with the engineers' changes that they've made for the Phase Two southside boulevard trees and greenscape area. We're also very pleased to see that the north sidewalk in Phase Two is being deleted, and we're now back to the original greenscape for that area. And we also are very glad to hear that the sidewalk widths are going to be maintained at five feet, which is the existing standard. The recommendations in terms of green guidelines, we're very happy to hear that our recommendations for the greenscaping at the tennis courts have been accepted, and that for the parking apron, that that will be removed, and there will now be trees in that area with the parallel parking that we recommended. Regarding crosswalks, this is probably the hot-button item that still remains primarily for Phase One, but for Phase Two as well. Here, we have to point out that there still seems to be a lack of acknowledgement that there is a speed safety problem in the school zone. Referring to the town's traffic count results from their previous testing in December, we note that this testing occurred during a period of five back-to-back storms, severe storms we had in that area, which certainly slowed the traffic down. Also, the town's flashing red, our warning signal lights, our signs were up there at the time that the testing was done. Both of those are contributing factors for skewing the results of the traffic speed study. If they had occurred at another time without those two skewed conditions, then I think perhaps we would have an accurate, up-to-date finding on the speed in that area. The main school entrance with the crosswalk, the holes that we have put forward, as you can see on this drawing, is really recognizing the need for direct crossing at the main school front entrance. And I must emphasize to you that the SD-71 administration and the PAC parents, the Parents' Advisory Committee, and you've received email from them just this last week, are a hundred percent on board with having all three crosswalks, and having the one in the middle as well. So I just wanted to correct for the record that that is actually the case, and that is their priority and their recommendation. And you have that confirmed in writing from them. The speed calming humps, we're very pleased to hear that Derek has indicated that they could be added at a later date if there's further clarification of exactly what degree we do have a speed safety problem at the school. And we hope that that will be followed up, because we think that they are very effective and that they should be included in this scheme. Parking design and regulation, again, we acknowledge with thanks McElhaney's amendments that they've made for curbside lane parking. We would like to see the zebra striping for residential driveways right in the immediate school frontage zone area. It's not a great cost factor. It really is something that would be very effective and helpful. We've had so many problems with people parking in our driveways along that immediate frontage. There is some signage up there to indicate that, you know, where they can park and for how long. And we don't think that signage on its own is going to be enough, but we are happy to see that the raised curves are going to be added to the north sidewalks in Phase One. The final point that I wanted to make is that the parking bay in front of the main school entrance here, this is the scallops portion that's just beside the entrance, that is something that we would like the administration and McElhaney to consider further. The reasoning for it is that if you look at various free accessibility standards that are applied throughout all of the Western Canadian provinces for public buildings and facilities, they do require that you have handicap parking area where you have direct access to handicapped accessible buildings. And right now, the current scheme doesn't. It can very easily. It simply means another two-foot widening of the proposed parking bay area along that side of the south frontage of the roadway. And with our recommendations, it doesn't have to encroach into the property line and into the school's property. So there'd be a two-foot setback from the property line to the inside edge of the sidewalk, then there'd be the standard five-foot sidewalk, and then all of our recommendations for the laneways, et cetera, are the same as McElhaney's. There's no change there. That then leaves a seven-foot strip of boulevard on the north side, which is sufficient to retain the endangered hedges. So combination of these things together work very well, both for safety, accessibility, for emergency vehicles that would need immediate access to the school entrance, et cetera. So we would like you to reconsider that, and certainly, these should be things that are part of the public open house process. Thank you.
All righty. So we were really looking forward to seeing the redesign presentation tonight. Thank you. As you can see from the number of delegates in the room, there's considerable community awareness and concern about the project now. We've also done a community awareness education campaign ourselves through a website and an email list. And not everyone could be here tonight, and we are not allowed to ask questions tonight. And maybe we have quite a few. So therefore, we'd like to ask for an open house with a presentation to be offered on the redesign. This would be an opportunity for the town to fully describe the plan to the community, explain the reasons why certain alternatives haven't been incorporated, and welcome further improvements to be considered, plus would offer a chance for community members to ask questions and hear answers as a full group. We believe this would result in more widespread acceptance of the plan and further your open and transparent manner regarding community involvement. We recommend that any redesign drawings at this open house clearly note both the current and the proposed dimensions, in layman's terms, of things like road width and sidewalks, for ease of public understanding of what would the change be once the project is completed. This ability to compare was one of the items missing at the November open house. We are respectful of the time schedules that impact the project economically, and we are happy to see this open house occur as quickly as possible. To help this happen, we as a community group are offering our services to help inform the public. As I said, we have a website, we have an email list, and we have members who have stepped forward to volunteer to hand-deliver the notices you produce about the open house into our neighborhood mailboxes. So we could very quickly get the word out if you were able to very quickly offer an open house, so that we can be careful about the timeline that affects the tendering process. We also have the cooperation of David Coates of a Cole-Robb Road School in offering facilities to host the open house, should you need it, should the fire hall not be available or not be deemed large enough. And we are going to be living with this street design for a very long time. And so we are very willing to work with you in order to collaboratively come up with a mutually beneficial design. And again, thank you very much for your time and understanding tonight.
All right, thanks for your presentation. Before you leave, there may be questions from members of council in either bill, or you can address those if you're ready. So giving council members here an opportunity if there's any specific question. So giving council members here an opportunity if there's any specific question. Yes, Councilor O'Nutt.
Hi, Laurie. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was wonderful. I do have one question, and that is regarding the safety of the kids and crosswalks and vehicle traffic. I'm wondering, how many times has the RCMP had to be called because of speeding concerns on that street? Do you know?
Actually, I was involved more directly with the issue than Laurie is. So I'll answer it if you don't mind. I've been involved with a number of the PACC meetings, the Parents' Association meetings, and they have had RCMP at these meetings, and they have informed them of the speeding problems. Now, if you ask us, has anyone actually been charged with speeding? No, because as a general rule, we have next to none RCMP presence in order to check speeding at the school zone. The RCMP forces, as you know, are well overworked in our valley, and it's not a big priority for them. We have had, though, the occasion, for instance, to my next-door neighbor has phoned the town of Comox to ask if the bylaw enforcement officer would come out to help to regulate our parking and traffic problems, complaining about some of the infractions that have occurred. And his response has been, quote-unquote, "I'm too busy to do that." So we haven't had a heck of a lot of involvement by any officials in terms of enforcement or regulations.
And I will add a note personally, that even though I've observed from my house speeders on the east end of Rob Avenue, I haven't bothered to phone the RCMP. And I imagine that that might be the case with other neighbors. It happens, we're irritated by it, we wish it didn't happen, and some of us think maybe a speed calming device would help. And the fact that there's no absence of evidence from RCMP complaint calls does not mean there is evidence of absence of speeding.
All right. Any further questions? Councilor O'Nutt?
Just a comment, and you know, I appreciate all the hard work that you and your committee have done to put this together, and the plans are good. I just have to stand up for the RCMP, because I live on the other end of Rob, and I see the unmarked car there right beside the old DC Tellestove Station. And at any given time, you've got somebody pulled over because they're crossing, because somebody's turning left towards the school, and they're passing over the crosswalk. So they do have a presence there. I see them there all the time.
But that's basically Anderton.
Yeah, but it's still impacting the school. But I just wanted to make that comment.
Sure. All right. Thank you for that, and we'll move on with the agenda. We have departmental reports here for receipt. We have the planning and building departmental report.
Move receipt.
Second. Were receipt panels in favor? Questions carried? Any questions or comments? Counselor O'Nutt?
A couple of questions. One, we had a boundary extension application up behind, I guess, the Drummond, at one point, about a few years back.
Run it.
Oh, the Hector Road. Hector Road area, yes. Yeah. I'm wondering if there's any news on that. And second, I'm wondering about the development on Pritchard Road and where we stand with that. And I mean, we were thinking before Christmas we'd see some stormwater management stuff done, and maybe getting ready to roll. I'm wondering what it would look like.
CAO can probably handle the first one, and maybe the second.
Shelley Russford has been in contact with the ministry recently, and we are anticipating a written response from the ministry in a few weeks on the Hector Road boundary extension. And on the northeast stormwater management plan, I think the erosion sediment control bylaws nearing completion. Marvin, can you give us an update on the stormwater management process?
Certainly. Yes, we do have a draft erosion sediment control bylaw, which they're implementing by law for the stormwater management plan from northeast Comox. We have had a meeting beginning of January with McIlhany to review the remaining outstanding items in the Phase Two report. So they are working on that now, and when it comes back, it will be reviewed, given it a very high priority, and then forwarded to council for consideration.
All right. Any further?
So if you have no idea, it's in McIlhany's hands at this moment?
Correct.
Because I know they were hoping to get these things wrapped up last year, and we were sort of saying, no, November, December, and now we're into the next year. So it's up to them to get that to us at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions in the planning and building report? I will move on then to the fourth quarter financial statements for receipt.
Move receipts.
Receive then, all's in favor. Any questions for our finance director in terms of the report? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering what impact, if we can get this sewer flow meter thing corrected. I know at the regional district, they're talking about a 10% increase on the sewer side of things, which will affect our budget, of course, and I'm wondering if this can be balanced off with the flow meter issue that we fed with Courtney's pump station.
In fact, it already has. If you look at draft one of the financial plan, you'll see when you get to the sewer budget, that we've removed any proposed increases passed this year.
Thank you. We'll get to that later in the meeting.
Yes.
Any further in the financial statement? Yes, Councilor O'Nutt?
I just wondered, in the water metering and connections, we're significantly over budget. Can you help me understand that?
Yes, I think Counselor O'Nutt has seen the results of that firsthand, because when we had our drive, Public Works realized that this was an opportunity to start chasing leaks. And in some cases, they had to install meters across multiple homes until they found the source of the leak. So for instance, at Counselor O'Nutt's home, he was seeing water incursions into his basement at some.
I figured it out to be 500 to some odd thousand liters of water were spilt in the year, the year that I had been keeping an eye on it. And we just thought it was groundwater in Rob area?
In fact, it was a leak.
Three doors up.
Yeah, several homes up. And so through the summer, because we were going in stage three, the Public Works Department aggressively was pursuing the areas of green grass, not because we suspected people were cheating on watering, but because we were chasing leaks. And we're successful. So how are things now?
Well, it's pretty wet today. We were laking the waves there last night, and it was all green, all the deer were coming out here.
But through the fall, did you see the improvements after the leak was fixed?
Vast improvements, yeah. My backyard, I used to walk, and it would be spongy, and now, because I had to put drainage throughout my yard because I thought it was groundwater, but anyway, it's dried it up. It stopped running, so.
So in summary, it's your fault. We're all in touch.
No, actually, it cost me about $3,000 to fix the town's problem, but coming into my.
Your worship, the reality is that we are finding leaks where we install meters, not universally, but a small percentage, and some of them are significant. And so there is an impact on the water system, and the fact that our water consumption as a community was down 8% through those months last year, compared to, for instance, our sister communities, that, you know, both the rural area, I think they went down a percent in the nearest service area, and I think Courtney was basically unchanged from previous year's water use. And since we buy every penny, every drop of water we use, we spend about $1.5 million a year, there are significant savings in the water system that I think churn up when you go through the financial report.
Thank you.
And here, all along, we thought Counselor O'Nutt was just all that. All right. Public Works report. For receipt?
Move receipt.
Excuse me. Sorry. Could I make just one more comment for our finance director? Thank you. Dawn, I noticed in our financial report that the roundabouts at Glazer View are scheduled for approximately 2020. I've had a cause of concern about the kind of congestion that happens in that area where people are just turned around.
Counselor O'Nutt, I think you're jumping ahead here.
Oh, am I?
We're talking about the financial plan here, or you're talking about the financial report?
Oh, financial plan. Is that not a plan?
We're just dealing with the last quarter of financial statement.
Oh.
It's to come.
We'll get there.
Okay. So that's just a heads up.
We'll be ready.
Another motion, I guess. All right, so back to the Public Works report for receipt.
Move receipt.
Second. All's in favor? Questions carried? Any questions about the Public Works report? See, then, we'll move on. Report from Parks Building Maintenance Committee, for receipt.
Move receipt.
Second.
Were receipt then, all's in favor? Questions carried? Any questions for our Parks Director? He's here. Yes, Counselor O'Nutt?
I see there, there's a completion of the conceptual plan for Bay Park Public Viewing Platform. Are we going to have any look at them?
Yes.
Are you going to bring them?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And any idea when?
Could bring it forward to the next committee.
Great. Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. And nothing further, then we'll move on to the Fire Department report for receipt.
Move receipt.
Second. All's in favor? Questions carried? Any questions for the Fire Chief for the House of Commons?
Yeah, I mean, it always looks great. And I just wondered, with the work experience program, who actually paid them? I realize low-cost to us.
To the Chair. So the work experience program is young people typically that volunteer hours, so they don't get paid at all. They're working hours in the fire station. We supervise those hours. We bring them on calls with us, and by and large, these people are trained, but they get zero pay for that.
Crazy, though.
It's a pretty good.
People stuffing it that way.
Yeah, that's why I'm interested in doing more of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further?
I have to ask the other question. How are we doing with our recruiting of people? It's always an issue with our fire department. I'm interested to hear how we're making out.
It's an issue right across Canada. Last year, we had eighteen members which are reported in our report here at lots of the fire department. This year, we've had two already, and potentially another two by the end of this month. So it looks like we'll have another, you know, full year of losing people and recruiting new people. Recruiting hasn't been a big issue, it's just the training and retention of them. So it's an ongoing issue, and I don't think it's going away in the next few years.
And I didn't see you swimming at the polar bear swim.
No, I was manning the fire station that day. We had a bunch of staff down at the polar bear.
Nice way out of that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on then to staff reports for receipt. We have the report to the committee of all by our engineer.
I will move receipt to that.
For receipt then, all's in favor? Questions carried? Any further questions for staff regarding the report? Counselor O'Nutt?
Yeah, just wondering, to have another public hearing, not a public hearing, sorry, open house, to have this, would you be able to, through, at least, would you be able to provide a little bit more in-depth information than what was going on tonight? Do you think it would engage the residents to accept the changes? It seems to me that we've kind of got a nice balance of what the town had come up with, what the residents had proposed, and put that together. Do you think that could be, an open house could be turned around quickly and have people... Would it negatively impact the tendering process?
I don't think so. I guess it just depends on what the purpose of the open house would be, if it was just to inform them, or to get more feedback, to come up with another consensus design. I think that the presentation that McIlhany presented, the design that McIlhany ended up with, has met all the needs. I think the design changes that we're not doing have good reasons for safety components, the data we don't have, traffic engineers' recommendation, following our manuals and guidelines for implementing crosswalks. So there's a lot of background. As part of my report, I had in there to provide this summary on our website, as well as cover the design that Derek has also implemented, and just advise them of what has happened and why, the decisions made. That was my recommendation. I think an open house to inform wouldn't slow down, but if it's to continually...
Well, yeah, and we could have a dialogue going forever and stuff. I get that, but.
And I think the majority, like more than 50%, was to retain the boulevard, you know, have a tree planting program, which we're taking up 12 cherry trees and are putting in 52. We're dealing with the parking, you know, we met all the school district needs, we're doing improvements at the intersection. So I think we've addressed, as you can see from the comments sheet that we have provided, I think it provides a good opportunity for the residents to see, you know, that we were listening, we made the changes, and the changes that we didn't make, these are the reasons why. So I guess that would be up to council's...
Yeah. Counselor O'Nutt, just ask the CEO to respond in terms of the other opportunities that we do annually for open house on our capital project.
As council may recall, and it's part of our strategic plan, it's one of the priorities to provide public information, and one of the means we do that is an open house for all the capital projects that we do on an annual basis, as well as those that are coming forward in future years. And we usually schedule that once the financial plan has been essentially approved by council. So if, just thinking ahead, an opportunity to hold that open house would present itself probably in April of this year. So the community can come and get information on this project, as well as all the other projects that we would have on the books for 2016 and future years as well in our plan.
Counselor Price?
Yes, and I had just a couple of questions, too, that as we're on the open house idea and presentation, I certainly think it would be a good idea. I mean, I learned a lot tonight, and I certainly appreciate, and that there has been a lot of listening, there's been a lot of communicating, and I think when a community wants to get this involved, I think, you know, it's important for us to be able to provide the format for them to be involved. And so I think an open house with a presentation on the redesign, and so to explain the plan, and for people to be able to ask questions and work on details, because this is going to affect people once the project moves ahead. And I love your mitigating strategies of working with people, moving plants, and sometimes it's better, the more you know of a situation, the easier it is to adapt to it. And there may be things that come up, and I won't touch on a couple of things at this moment, but I would like to make a motion that we do have an open house with a presentation on the redesign.
Counselor Price, just before you do...
Okay, later. Okay, well, that's my question.
This will be an item that we would have to deal with a subsequent meeting in terms of a motion, unless all of council agrees, because we don't generally make motions out of delegations at the same meeting. So that...
But I mean, isn't it a motion out of the report?
The report's just delivered for information at this time. So if you want a specific motion brought forward regarding open houses, that would have to be, in my understanding, done at a subsequent meeting, because we don't make decisions based on delegations until a subsequent meeting, maybe here back from staff, that kind of thing.
Well, you're saying, your worship, at a regular council meeting, the motion hasn't been...
Yeah, I'll defer to procedural advice here.
That would be the next opportunity available.
Thank you. And I just, just a couple of things. It's been brought up a couple of times about people parking across driveways, and have we done several lines before? And is there a cost associated, or you think it's too confusing?
There is a cost, sure, resources to do it, and I don't think it's a big cost, but it is there, and I think it's another tool that might confuse things. We've got the legal to, you know, we've got the motor vehicle, you can't access or block an access or a driveway, we have our bylaw. So we have two things already that we can enforce. I think this is not industry standard, to put the busy remarking, that could create another, you know, conflict to say, well, I didn't see the yellow paint. It just adds that confusion that could create, you know, we have two legal documents that we could use and enforce, you know, maybe working with our bylaw enforcement officer and getting a help there, I think, like McIlhany's. help there, I think, like McElhany mentioned, the school, being a parent at Rob Road School, we, you know, we get that advised regularly on voice message, to make sure we're not blocking, so I think things have changed in the last few years, and I think educating the parents and the public, and I think it's happening, so I'm thinking that would just cause more of a confusion than anything, they'll rely on these, and if, you know, if it's with winter season and it's raining, it just delves out, it's not there, then they might just rely on that, so I don't see the benefit in having it, because we've already got resources to implement and enforce.
So perhaps working on the strategy with our bylaw officer, because it certainly is very irritating, at the very least, when your driveway's blocked, and the handicap parking, so that there is access for...
Yes, and we, McElhany and myself met with the school district a number of times in the past year, and that was one that we brought up, and they preferred not to have emergency access or wheelchair accessibility in front of the school, they would deal with it on-site and in the back if it needed, so they preferred to keep all of the parking in front of their school.
Okay, so they've already thought of this in their planning?
Yeah, and we proposed that quite, or asked that question lately, and asked if they wanted, they wanted us to accommodate that in part of the design, and they said no, they would have that on-site and have it accessed, and take care of any type of accessibility parking that they would need at that time, and there's actually access points on either side of the school, on the east side and the west side, for emergency fire personnel in the school district, we'll come with the fire hall as well to see what they're doing for us, so no improvements were recommended from the school district in that regard.
And one last question, when the speed testing was done, was it when the boards were up, because I know that definitely slowed.
Yeah, now I'm wondering, I know they were there, and we've been having problems with the speed radar boards, so I'm not, there might have been an overlap, but I'm not sure, so I'll have to go back, but, you know, there's definitely some good points that raised that could be, could have definitely affected if they were there, in terms of the weather, but because they were in tune with our 2010 data as well, that's there, I think that my recommendation, and what we always do, or we try to do, we're obviously limited with resource, is that when we do these improvements, you know, let's carry on with the design that we have now, and then we can put the speed radar tubes out, say, you know, following construction to see what that impact is going to be, let's see what these improvements are going to have on the speed, and then we can go from there, and ensure that we're managing traffic calming in an, you know, equitable manner, so that would be my recommendation, that we would probably do, and council could definitely give us that direction to make sure we follow up, but...
Thank you.
Counselor Grant?
Yeah, I guess for me, I think I've been at the table here for about 12 years now, and this is unprecedented public input that we've had on this, for a operational issue of paving a road, and I get it, you know, when I look at Rob Road, and I live very close to it, so I see it just about every day, I can see that trees and hedges and things like that are a big issue to people, and I certainly understand that, I do get a little bit concerned, though, when we start having, the public starting to get into the engineering piece of what we're trying to do here, engineering is done for safety issues and many other things, and a lot of the things that were brought up, like crosswalks and mid-street crosswalks and speed bumps, we go over this, comes up almost every time we do it, every neighborhood wants these, but mid-street crosswalks, I've heard it a thousand times, are the most dangerous, and they're not good, and speed bumps are not liked by the RCMP, they're not liked by our fire department, and certainly snow removal doesn't like them either, so if there's other ways to calm traffic, I think those are the things, but those are examples of the public getting into the engineering piece of a road, and so if a public meeting were to happen, if it were for clarification of some of the issues, that would be one thing, but I think that we're at the point where we have to get moving on this, we are at or over budget on this already, so there can't be much added on to it, and we also have time constraints on this, and we want to get this paved during the summertime, when the kids aren't in school, we certainly don't want that road ripped up in the middle of the school season, so there's lots of reasons, I get that the people in the audience would like perhaps some more clarification on this, and certainly, you know, I don't have a big problem with that, but I don't think that it's time to be getting more engineering and safety issues on the table, I just, I think we're opening a real can of worms if we go down that road, so.
Counselor, now?
Yeah, well, just to, I think personally, I think the residents came up with some good ideas that even, you know, McElhany looked at and incorporated that into the plan with the town, so I wouldn't want to say that, you know, their input is not needed, I mean, just because they live there doesn't mean that they don't have any experience of what is needed for traffic calming or whatever, so my question, though, was about the lines that the residents had wanted parked, but could you not have a compromise, and maybe paint the curbs yellow just as they lead into the driveway? You know, I mean, I've seen that...
Just use the black part of the wall, how does it...
Yeah, but I've seen that.
CEO has...
Generally, we're trying to get away from the paint as an awareness piece, simply because of ongoing maintenance, so we, as Shelley pointed out, we try to use signs where practical, but the paint refining, we have to go back year after year to redo, and that is, you know, a maintenance cost to us, and we're trying to reduce the amount of effort we have to continue putting on, and we seem to go back, so that's another primary reason that we're trying to...
Isn't the signage, like, stuff that if you go to coordinator, that stuff, you need the signage, the paint doesn't help you?
The signage is important, and particularly on the driveway access, I think that's part of getting your driver's license.
I can see zebras all over town, they'll probably outnumber the deer.
Yeah.
Maybe pink deer on the road, there you go.
I guess my only comment is, I think we've heard that we can put in those speed bumps later, and if, I think there's going to be some significant changes to the roadway, and it's going to alter perhaps the traffic patterns that exist there, so, I mean, I would be comfortable in leaving it as it is, and we have zebra lines and speed bumps to go to should there be problems.
You. Counselor Mark Grant, then, Ken.
First of all, I'd like to commend all of the people that have been involved, you've done a terrific job of communicating concerns back and forth, and they've been of great willingness to listen and to share ideas and information, and I commend that, from all the reports and the communication between the Rob Avenue Community Group and the town staff, they've all been open and transparent and very informative, and hearing all of this from both sides, as a result, many of the concerns expressed by the community group have been addressed, as we have heard, thanks to Mr. Jensen's presentation, and I, again, I commend the communication that's going between, the town is listening, the engineers are listening, it's a good scene, and out of respect for the extensive personal time and effort that this project has received, a one-time extension to January 31st, which is only four days away, I question what additional information staff can offer with yet another extension of time, be it an open house or an information session.
Counselor Ken?
Yes, I won't reiterate what was so eloquently said by Counselor Grant, except to say that we want to be known as a community that listens, and I think this was a good illustration of it, something that we'd like to hang or have on as a community, that we do listen to our neighbors, and I think our staff should be commended for taking in that, and there needs to be an end point, and there needs to be a point when that people need to agree to disagree, I will, however, consider the motion if it comes up at next council meeting, but I know that we need to have faith too on our engineering staffs, and it was of great interest to me when I heard that there was reference to the PAC at Rob Road and the principal, and yet in the McElhany's report, that they had consulted with the school district engineers who had suggested one thing, whereas the principal and the PAC were looking at another thing, at one point, input comes in, it needs to be considered, but we need to have some faith in our engineering staff as well at the end of the date, and so we'll look at the motion if it comes up next week, and if so, I think we need to bring it to conclusion at some point sooner rather than later.
All right, thank you for that, any further? Thank you, counsel, for that discussion, so we'll see what happens with the motions that come forward, so we'll move on to the next report, which is leading into our financial plan, but it's not deployed there yet, Counselor Grant, this is a carry-forward, unexpendable project budgets to 2016, so...
I will move on, we approve that.
Yeah, so this is just basically being authorizing staff to continue to spend 2015 project budgets into the 2016 calendar year, so. Move in second, any discussion? Seeing no, in favor?
Yeah.
All right, I got to suggest a two-minute recess to give us a breather before we get into the financial plan, so hopefully everyone's able to...
Well, we can read, we're gonna... I knew that was what, pink! Although this is cool.
Everybody from the second one? Come on in here. Are you a coffee? Okay, we'll discuss this one. It's your first question. I wasn't supposed to say something, you know, you're talking about... You want a beer? Oh, wow. Yeah. Well, stay over there. I get the shot of the cow, the best one, the opportunity to...
All right, everyone had their... All right, so we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the financial plan, and our director of finance does have a presentation for us, so we'll hear from him.
Nothing lives a little better than your own financial plan. I'm moving up to the project, it can be a little more interactive, so it's less of a presentation, and then, yes, I'll show you some things, but I also want to be able to answer some questions, my cover memo points out basically the key items to understand when you're looking at this first draft, it is a very, for a draft, at this point, final 2015 revenues and expenses aren't done, because we still haven't finalized things for the auditors, so there will be some changes, for this plan, I have assumed the same pattern of tax increases that this plan included, it includes a new source of revenue, franchise fees from Fortis, I'm not proposing to change marina revenues for 2016, given that there'll be some small inconvenience for marina tenants during the construction of our waterfront project, we're suggesting that we can hold revenues steady for one year in consideration of them, the 2016 utility rates, by utilities, I mean our garbage, sewer and water services, are as council adopted in December, this worksheet here, which we'll get to in a moment, shows our core expenses for the departments that are kind of, for the departments and services that we consider core services, general government, police, fire, public works, garbage, planning, recreation parks, building maintenance, and marina, culture and fiscal services, that core changes a little bit from year to year, we split out from that, increases to staffing, new services, new contributions to reserves, basically additions to the core, we highlight those, so some of those include our contribution to the homelessness initiative, and a new reserve contribution for our public safety reserve, notable increase to our core service levels in public works is a request for an engineering tech, there's lots of reasons for that, memo mentions some of them, cultural expenses are slightly changed to reflect the staff time that traditionally has been spent on seasonal lighting embarrasses as well as nautical days, we have an inter-fund loan, we loaned money from one reserve fund to another a year ago so that we could build a new public works facility, we have to start paying that money back, that's reflected in this financial plan, we're budgeting increases to our general capital and equipment replacement reserves, we have two major debt issues that will retire over the term of this five-year plan, including the library debt and the rec center expansion debt, then, in 2018, we'll be general debt-free, which is an amazing accomplishment, I really have to praise council for their steadfast approach on this, particularly on your commitment to shift the budgets that we've been spending on debt repayment over to capital, addressing our capital needs, and you'll see as we get into our capital plan, that in 2018, we reach two kilometers of resurfacing, we go to 2.5 in 2019, and by 2020, we resurface three kilometers of road surfaces, now, we have just under 90 kilometers of roads, and if you expect them to last 30 years, 90 divided by 30 is three kilometers a year, you'd expect to be doing paving on, it's not quite that simple, because we are very focused in the road lifetime, and casting ourselves back in time 30 years, we didn't have many kilometers of road then, we only had 57, but still, crossing the two-kilometer-a-year threshold is important, it means that we're keeping up with our infrastructure age, and if we can get to three kilometers, that means we're not only keeping up, we're catching up, and we're starting to really address the infrastructure deficit, so that is a significant mile post that we've crossed those thresholds, I mentioned earlier in the meeting that we're, in our utilities, sewer and water, we're expecting that some of the efforts that we've made, for instance, in leak detection, in 2015 will continue to bear fruit in 16 and 17 and 18, so I've actually reduced slightly my expectations of bulk water purchases, and that reduces costs, and similarly, in the sewer fund, the recalibration of the major pump station flow meters has resulted in a shift in the flows, and that was noted earlier, and that's reflected in the financial plan too, capital expenditures over these five years total almost $26 million, and when you realize that we only get $7 million in general property taxes a year, that's huge, and we can only maintain that level of commitment because we're using all the resources at our fingertips, we apply for grants from senior... Now, what's important to note is that these projects are about $1.2 million apiece to do, and that they're road development cost charge eligible. So, in the normal course of events, we would draw money out of our road DCCs and fund the projects. But as you know from our monthly financial statement report for December, the current balance in our road DCCs is, I believe, $179,000. So, when we're talking two $1.2 million projects, we are a long way from having the sufficient funds. Can we fund them without using our DCCs? Absolutely, but that means taxation. So, that's a daunting prospect. So, if we could turn for just a moment and look at the first two pages of the financial plan, they're the analysis of the core expenses, and you can think of them as a dashboard, if you will, that gives you some quick indicators that compare kind of where core expenses are going. So, on our operating expenses, you'll see that overall, from the 2015 to the 2016 budget, we're at 4.69 percent. We're down a little in 2017, 2018 down just a hair, and up less than half a point in 19, and a little over half a point in 2020. So, that means that by and large, we've got our core costs under control. Now, that being said, the 4.69 percent should catch your eye because that's a significant increase, and I'd like to take a moment and just cover some of the reasons for that increase. If you look down these two columns, 2015 budget and 2016 budget for each of the departments, wherever you see a large discrepancy, that's driving the total increase here, which is nearly $600,000. So, for instance, you've got $127,000 increase to general government. If you go into the general government budget and go through it line by line, you'll see that that's made up of the $30,000 commitment to the homelessness initiative. That's $33,350 that wasn't spent last year, wasn't transferred into our affordable housing reserve, and an additional $60,000 in our legal budget this year because we know we have an issue that needs to be dealt with this strain, and we have, as of today, a proposed trial lead. In garbage, you'll see that there's an increase of $95,000, and what's driving that is primarily tipping fees, okay? Those are subject to another $10 a ton the first of January, so that's what's driving that one. Recreation, you'll see that one's up $167,000. Well, if you cast your mind back a year, there were a number of staffing increases in the recreation department, and those happened in the fall, in September of 2015. That locks them into the core, but the 2016 cost impact is three times the 2015 cost impact. So, the core improvements that you approved last year are now locked in, and you're seeing the effect of that there. The important thing to understand about recreation is that the user fees so far have been funding the increases. And when we get to the recreation budget, at the very bottom lining, there's a line that shows you what the net impact on taxation is, and you'll be very favorably impressed if you compare 2016, 17, 18. Man, he's doing a good job of holding the line there. At fiscal services is another one. This includes debt payments and contributions to reserve. It's up by $66,000. That's a net of two things. We've added the inter-fund debt repayment. That bumps things up by 115, but we also took out the $33,350 a year that we were previously contributing from tax revenue into our affordable housing reserve. So, those two net. So, between those items, that's the vast majority of the core increase here. So, the takeaway on this part of the worksheet is that core expenses are under control, okay? That's a concern to you and to taxpayers, of course. And then, down below, in the next page or so, we've identified all the increases to the core. So, $104,000 in staffing increases with the fire department, $383,000 across five years for the engineering tech, $170,000 for engineering projects, that includes orthophobos, servicing study at the Amherton Corridor, and an update to the traffic study laid in the plan, $129,000 in change for additional staffing increases at the rec center, $15,000 more for culture, $90,000 for parks because we need to start providing for an allowance of additional costs for northeast Comox. We expect that there'll be a park included in the subdivision up there and the boulevards, and so there'll be additional maintenance costs. And finally, $575,000 in fiscal services across the five years. These are increases to our reserves, the general capital reserves, the equipment replacement reserve, and the new contribution to public safety. Shelley, can we pop to the next page? Thank you. So, bottom line is $1.5 million in additions to the core, and if you look at the current bottom line, when we add in the capital on top of operating, this draft of the financial plan shows $2,181,000 more in expenditures than revenues. Now, at this point, I want to emphasize this is not alarming. We will balance that off from reserves and surpluses carried forward, just like we did last year, but at this point, when we're adding and subtracting and tweaking, I don't want to get too elaborate. All I need to know is, do I have $2.1 million in the bank? And the answer is yes, just.
And just for clarification, the line above that talks about 2.7, and that's for each of the five.
Yes. Shelley, can we pop down one more?
Sure.
So, our financial plan is based upon two sets of increases to property taxes, okay? We've assumed a 2.7 percent general property tax increase generally, as well as a small increase to the tax base through real growth, things like new subdivisions, new construction. And in the report I gave you at the first committee of the whole, I was able to show you that B.C. assessment indicated that we have met our target for this year of half a percent real growth. So, I know council always likes to ask the question, could we charge less? Could our increase be less? Because, because each year compounds on the previous year, you need to factor in the compounding. Our general property taxes are 7.6 million, so 1 percent increase is $76,470. A tenth of a percent increase or change is $7,647, okay? But then, the next year, that's based on this, so that 7,600 populates through the whole plan and compounds a little bit. So, if you reduce in 2016 by 1/10th of a percent, if we go from 2.7 down to 2.6, then that flows through the whole plan, and the net cost is $40,000, okay? If you were to do it in the first two years, the total cost would be $72,500. In the first three years, it'd be $97,000. If you reduce the model to 2.6 percent across the five years, it would be $123,000 reduction in our revenue. So, that means that we have to take out $123,000 to offset that, okay? Alternately, if you had a half percent decrease, rather, in just 2018, just to pick that year at random, then that would have essentially the same effect. So, you can either have a tenth of a percent saved across the plan year by year, or a half percent saved in one year mid-plan, and either way, it's $123 or $125,000.
Okay. Are you ready for questions, or is there...
At any point in time, you wish.
All right. Questions for the guy who makes numbers look fun?
They are fun! Oh, yeah.
The reference to the public safety reserve, you said that you show an amount currently unspent in 2015, and you've added a $250,000 contribution to that reserve. I guess, is that the number that we didn't spend last year? And then, secondly, you're just proposing a one-time contribution at this point because we don't know what next year might bring.
Correct. So, the first question asked was, is that the amount of money we save? As of today, our saving is a little over $330,000. Now, we don't know what the final number is going to be because I'm waiting to receive the RCMP invoice for October, November, and December. So, I've made a quarterly accrual based on previous bills, but it could be plus or minus, sometimes a fair bit. So, but as of today, I show a $330,000 surplus, and I'm proposing to put $250,000 into the reserve for public safety this year. So, if you turn to page 66 of your agenda, you'll see the police budget, and you'll see where those numbers come from. When we established the reserve this past fall, what I said to council is that we could come to you annually through the budget process, and based on what we're seeing from the previous year in terms of any unspent policing funds, we can then make the request at that point in time.
Because in the past, that would just simply be part of the surplus that would be carried forward, and we wouldn't have set it aside.
Right, and the memo that I brought forward in the fall said one of the reasons we wanted to establish the reserve was as much as possible to take the money that we saved, that we taxed people for, for public safety, try and keep that within that spending envelope, and the reserve allows us effectively to do that. We can look at money unspent one year and put it in the reserve for future needs.
Other questions, Councilor Anna?
Yeah, a little earlier, you said both personnel increases to the rec center, for example. So, you, CIO, don't see any increased need for more administrative staff in the next five years? You think status quo is good, or do we see, do we see the need? I mean, the town gets more complex, doing business is more complex. Wants a needs, I know, but should we be looking at increasing that?
There's always a need, but I think what we're trying to do in this plan is to identify our high priority areas first, and over the next few years, we're going to start factoring in the other departments. We also have to factor in for some succession planning within the organization as there's a surprising common age of employees.
I'm there.
And it's not low.
I'm reading.
So, we're starting that process as well, but this, we've got some needs here that we need to address in recreation and fire and public works at present.
Yeah. Because speaking of public works, don't see anything like increased maintenance to the town hall to do anything with that. We're just going to keep on...
I keep buying fire insurance.
Yes, yeah.
Just put "Pabba" on the end of it.
It's a matter of priorities at this point. When we get our inter-fund reserves repaid from the public works project, which I believe is 2021, if I'm doing my math, or 2022, anyway, once that's repaid, there is an opportunity because there's a certain amount of taxation revenue that's been committed to that, that's freed up. And at this point in time, it might be a little premature to start working towards that, but I see the same financing tool being available then, because if you borrow money from your own reserves, what interest you're actually putting into the reserve, you're topping up your own bank account, and that will be a significant benefit to us in the future.
Thank you. All right. Any questions from this side of the table?
I don't know if this is appropriate now, but the page 55, your proposed increases to core operations over the next five years. Not that I'm questioning, because it's a committee of the whole, there's something I'm curious about, and I thought that transparency of getting an answer why might be helpful to all of us, let alone taxpayers that might be interested.
Shelley, can you back up a page? Page 55.
There's just a couple of ones that stood out for me, and they may have good reason, and I'd just like to hear it to be able to support. Public works and engineering technician mid-2016, the need for that.
I think Director Finance did touch on that briefly, but allow him to elaborate.
I didn't elaborate earlier, but I think this evening is the best example you could have, right? We need to go out to the community earlier and sooner and be more interactive, and this is a position that would help enable that. We need better mapping, we need, I mean, I think my memo says, one of the things that we're going to be running into with northeast Comox, which was raised by council earlier this evening, is that now, instead of just putting stormwater in pipes and it goes away, now we've got to have infiltration galleries, and the landscaping and the boulevards become part of the stormwater management system. That needs to be managed, right? It's not passive, and it needs to be managed by somebody who's got some expertise.
So, that addresses the $90,000...
Partially, yeah. GIS and asset management. Asset management has been on council strategic plan for quite a while. Now, we've done the first step, which is we've pretty much mapped out our mapping system, we've figured out what pipes are where. Now, we get into the really tough part, which is evaluating the condition of those assets and starting to figure out, over the long term, when we've scheduled them for replacement. When is the right time to replace our assets? That's engineering grunt work that we need a body for. So, those are some of the issues that we think need to be addressed.
Any questions from this side of the table?
I don't know if this is appropriate now, but page 55, your proposed increases to core operations over the next five years. Not that I'm questioning them, because it's a committee of the whole. There's something I'm curious about, and I thought that transparency of getting an answer why might be helpful to all of us, let alone taxpayers that might be interested.
Shelley, can you back up a page? Page 55.
There's just a couple of ones that stood out for me, and they may have good reason, and I'd just like to hear it to be able to support. Public Works, an engineering technician, mid-2016, the need for that.
Director Finest did touch on that briefly, but allow him to elaborate.
I didn't elaborate earlier, but I think this evening is the best example you could have, right? We need to go out to the community earlier and sooner and be more interactive. And this is a position that would help enable that. We need better mapping. We need, I mean, I think my memo says, one of the things that we're going to be running into with Northeast Comox, which was raised by council earlier this evening, is that now, instead of just putting stormwater in pipes and it goes away, now we've got to have infiltration galleries and the landscaping and the boulevards become part of the stormwater management system. That needs to be managed, right? It's not passive. And it needs to be managed by somebody who's got some expertise.
So that addresses the $90,000.
Partially, yeah. GIS and asset management. Asset management has been on council's strategic plan for quite a while. Now, we've done the first step, which is we've pretty much mapped out our mapping system. We've figured out what pipes are where. Now we get into the really tough part, which is evaluating the condition of those assets and starting to figure out, over the long term, when we've scheduled them for replacement. When is the right time to replace our assets? That's engineering grunt work that we need a body for. So those are some of the issues that we think need to be addressed. And not just we think need to be addressed, but these are council's priorities, right? Northeast Comox, asset management.
Yes?
In addition to what Don pointed out, in terms, speaking on the engineering tech, we have, a lot of Shelley's time is also being committed to the regional side of the projects. We've got, we're heavy on capital on the regional side as well with water treatment, studies going on with sewer pump stations, and we're talking well over $100 million worth of work that we share a pretty penny on. And when staff are away dealing with those issues, they're not, in Comox, dealing with our own issues, which is another reason that we're trying to get bodies in here to work on those projects.
Thank you for these explanations. I think the taxpayer needs to hear this too, because there's logic behind the suggestions, but quite often, a layperson doesn't understand this, and to his point, it opens in that regard. You touched, I think, on the police RCMP, the increase of about $300,000. Is that contractual as well?
No, we're contributing $250,000 to our reserve. There's no contractual. That's within council's sole discretion. So that's entirely under your control. Thank you.
Typically, police has been somewhere where we tend to over-budget because we assume a full force all the time and then come in under-budget. So it's kind of one of those places we can find some room in our plan sometimes. But with the new reserve, it gave one of our tricks away.
Some communities budget for less than their full complement. That's always bothered me, to be honest. I'm not wishing to criticize other communities, but I rejected that approach and tried, as did my predecessor, to encourage council to budget the full cost of officers. Because if we promised that we'll fund, in our case, 11.4 officers, the last thing we want to have happen is to actually get to a day where they're at full strength and we have to say to the RCMP, "We can't pay you." It doesn't work that way. If you made the commitment for 11.4 officers, you have to be willing to fund them. And given that, we've got a fairly small number. Like, if we were, you know, a larger community with 100 or 200 officers, you could look at it and say, "Well, you know, from a statistical point of view, you know that you're bound to have a certain vacancy rate that you can rely on." But when you've got small numbers, it's harder to predict. Because one or two bodies being on maternity leave or sick leave suddenly changes things radically.
And if you look at page 66 again, which we referred to earlier, showing the unspent money of $334,000, that was based on the difference between budget for 2015 and the actuals. Now, for 2016, we're still budgeting the 11.6 officers that we've budgeted for the last number of years, and that goes through the plan. However, there are costs, drivers within that that go up every year as well.
And you'll see that the cost of policing is escalating by about $30,000 to $40,000 a year.
The $300,000 number that you're referring to, Councilman Kennedy, just relates to the fact that we did not spend that this past year, and that proposal from staff is to put 250 of that into your reserve. The question I had in that regard was, if we put a lesser amount into reserve, I assume that, say, we did only 125,000, then that would equate out to about a half a percent over five years of the plan. Is that about right? Or 0.1 a year for each of the next five years?
0.1, yeah, but 0.1 a year in year one.
Yes.
So 2.6, 2.7, 2.7, 2.7, 2.7.
That costs about 125,000.
Exactly, yes.
So if we eliminated, for example, that contribution to reserve, then the best we would achieve is about 2.5 over the life of the plan.
Unless you eliminate, unless you decided to do 125 every year instead of 2.5.
Well, each year, we won't know because I guess we haven't seen what's going to be left in a year. At this point, the proposal is to see that fund, the reserve fund of 250,000 out of the 334, change everything. All right? Other questions? So staff, unless there's other questions, are certainly looking not only for receipt of this plan, but for any particular direction, and there are specific items in the budget or to a percentage rate. We've done it different ways in the past. This is the first opportunity, the first draft of the plan. Staff will go back and work on it again, but they probably would like to hear some indication of, is this the right direction or is there something different you want staff to do?
I guess, when I'm looking at the plan, and over the years, we always have the old public works building that we could punt off the end of the plan and save ourselves some money. We don't seem to have any of those anymore. So I'm just looking at the capital things, and I guess the challenge for us is to look and see, is there anything in that capital plan that we feel we don't need or that we can push off till after 2020?
Well, it might be useful then to kind of turn our minds to the capital plan, if you'd like, unless there's further presentations coming up.
Well, there's two ways of looking at it. One is that we tend not to put things on the plan we don't need. So all of them are of some level of importance. Council could also look at, are you comfortable with the 2.7% increase in property tax increases or not? And if there is a, if there's another number that you are more comfortable with, then if you give us that as guidance, we'll go back and make recommendations as to where we think we can remove certain items. But by certain, we can go through the capital plan and show you what we're doing for this year as well as the upcoming years.
I guess that just brings up one other question. I know, over the years, one of the things we did was, rather than using sidewalks, for example, coming out of general revenue, we use gas tax money, and that affected... Yes, and I'm just wondering, I guess, I'm sure you've looked at this, but to look and see if there's anything else we can use gas tax money for that we've got in general revenues and see if that kind of fits with the plan.
Is the gas tax money not already fully allocated?
Pretty much, yeah. I have to be honest, though, and say that pulling the second phase of Rob sidewalk out does give us some room. That was in last year's capital plan to do the north sidewalk all the way from Anderton through to Pritchard. And given the recommendations of the engineer tonight, you'll notice that the 2017 plan does not include that second phase of Rob sidewalk. So there is some money freed up.
Yeah, there's other challenges within the plan as well. For example, one of the big projects we've got for this year is a carryover, which is the Lazo Road Port Shale, which we're waiting to see whether we get infrastructure planning in. If we don't, that might be one we have to try to do ourselves. It's a big challenge.
It's interesting you bring that up because with the new contract for the gas tax program that was introduced last year, they've added a new category of expenditures that is eligible for disaster mitigation. And so theoretically, we could use those funds for Lazo Road. Now, we'd rather not tap into those funds, which are finite, if we can go to senior government and get a grant as well as those funds, right? And we're talking a major project, $1.8 million roughly, I think. So for now, our preference is not to go to the gas tax money, but to resubmit for the next intake of infrastructure applications, which closes in April?
End of April.
End of April. So that's already in the works.
So how much money did we save by not putting the sidewalk in from the gas tax? What kind of dollars are we looking at roughly? Hundreds of thousands? Four hundred?
Hundreds of thousands.
It's not showing in the plan, so I can't...
Well, the plan says Rob to Anderton Church, 180,400.
I think it was in the 600-plus range.
So it's a significant amount.
It's a significant amount, yeah. And if there are other eligible projects we want to do, we will be spending a significant chunk of that this year as part of the waterfront project. Because the connection, pedestrian connection from the waterfront to the upper parts of downtown are part of the plan. You'll see that in 2016.
For 2017, it says for Rob resurface, church to Pritchard, 465, 465,000. And then the widening of bike lanes, 240. Doesn't actually reference it under sidewalks separately.
There is a project, you'll see that I've highlighted, it's colored. So if you go to page 97 of the agenda, and that's a sidewalk that's been in the plan for a while. It actually is proposed to go from the corner of Port Augusta and Comox Avenue on the west side of Port Augusta to where it swings around and becomes balmoral at the golf course. We've highlighted that one because at a staff level, we're not necessarily convinced that that's a really good expenditure. We'd like council to reconfirm that that's what you want us to do because it would just end at the golf course, right? It doesn't really tie into anything there. Now, I recognize that it would be more pleasant to walk on the green edge of Port Augusta than the mall edge with, you know, parking lots and buildings and...
The crosswalk at the entrance to the golf course to the other crosswalk.
And this is partly what the engineers alluded to earlier. If you start leading pedestrians to something, you've got to lead them to something, and you've got to get them safely from there to the next something.
I personally can't see any point to it. I think it looks very nice with the grass covered and there is a sidewalk on the other side. I can't see any reason, I can't see that it would even be used. So I would be happy to take that out.
Now, that's funded by Community Works Funds, so it frees up some money in that fund, but it doesn't actually save us tax revenue.
So the challenge then is to find something that's being paid for in our general revenues that we could use gas tax money for.
Or find some other projects. At the staff level, Richard has brought up the fact that really, through some of the older portions of town, we don't have a big commitment to sidewalks. We're getting a good east-west route along Rob, but that only goes as far as Anderton. Once you get west of Anderton, there's not a lot of good east-west routes. Now, up at Bold, there's an east-west sidewalk. There's an east-west sidewalk through heart of Noel. But maybe as we start to get into resurfacing Cook or McKenzie, maybe, I realize those roads kind of jog at one point, but still, there may be some opportunities west of Anderton that might be pleasant for pedestrians, as well as being functional.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of affecting our plan, but you're probably right. Now, this may be a really silly question, but I can ask it anyway. Since we're putting money aside into the policing reserve for disaster and we're allowed to use gas tax for disaster money, can we take that 203 and put it in there? Save ourselves $203,000?
You wouldn't, no, you can't use, you can't use the gas tax money to contribute to reserves. You can use it for actual projects. So if you have a disaster, or if you're trying to stave off disaster, disaster mitigation or avoidance, you could do a capital project with that. So you could do a Lazo Road, Fort Shale, or Protection project, but you couldn't take that money and just pop it into reserves.
Counselor Anna?
It's not a bad question. I mean, there are no dumb questions here because we're trying to get the most value for money.
I'm trying to think of a dumb question.
Can you give us a sheet maybe before next budget to just remind us what gas tax eligible projects are?
Sure.
We could have a look through this plan, and I mean, we seem to have some money there that we could maybe affect our plan with that.
What I will do is, there was, when we got the new gas tax contract a year or so ago, we prepared a memo like that. So if council's okay with the idea of reduce, reuse, recycle, what I'd like to do is just forward you the memo from them, and we'll forward that to you electronically. So we don't even waste any paper.
See, we just saved an half a penny.
All right. Any further questions? I guess that one project that seems to be final consensus of that sidewalk's not required on the west side of Comox by the golf course, especially when I'm teaming off on break.
I would agree. That just goes in, it just bounces higher out of the mall.
So that could be directions to staff, if there's a further direction, we should hear it now. I mean, it's not a final draft as of yet, but this is the first opportunity, and we will be bringing this back to council in the next calendar?
Yes.
In a couple of weeks' time, so further digestion. But focus in, if you will, as you review this, that where the Community Works Funds are being spent is shown there on the plan, and that is a big part of the reason why we're able to get a lot of capital.
And staff did ask us what we wanted, 2.7% increase. Perhaps we could give them some response on that. Personally, I never like tax increases. I'd like them to be going the other way, but I do understand the need here. 2.7 is higher than I like, but I get it, and I think I could live with that. But if we can find ways to reduce through tax, that would make me very happy. If that's an answer at all.
It's some direction, for sure. We certainly aren't going to go beyond 2.7, I think. If we, if there was an appetite around the table to reduce the reserve contribution, say, the 125, that would get you closer to 2.6. But then again, it doesn't put it into reserves. That might be at least one other direction we could give. And then we would, of course, revisit that reserve contribution every year as part of it when we look at the business budget.
I can see that 2.6, and I think that seems like a good way to approach it.
Now, again, to reiterate, 2.6% in 2016 would cost 125,000, right? A 2.6% for 2016, 17, 18, 19, 20 is 125 plus 90 plus 75 plus et cetera, et cetera, right? It gets expensive very quickly.
Counselor Anna?
Yeah, I was just looking on page 97, their rebuild hardwood playground. Is that our responsibility, or would that not be...
That is the town park.
It is the town park.
And as part of our commitment to infrastructure renewal, Al Fraser, our park superintendent this year, came with a number of asks, primarily that we do need to start reinvesting in existing playgrounds that are starting to get, and Al's word, tired.
That being said, we've had some success with Lions and other organizations like Rotary to help us out at times.
And you'll notice a substantial partner contribution coming in in 2017 from the Lions, 50,000, I believe.
That's correct.
That's an extraordinary contribution from that organization.
Yeah, so with regards to the 125 for policing and dropping us a tenth of a point, I'm going to assume we have nothing in that reserve currently.
That's correct.
So I would feel better to build that up now and get a bigger reserve in early. And if we want to start looking at dropping it back after we've got some reserve, that would make more sense to me. For the sake of one tenth of one percent, to me, makes more sense.
Well, again, you know, tax increases are not the single thing that makes a difference. But I certainly could live with a 2.7 for this year. I think the fact that we have so little debt is our strength, and obviously, if we can come up with some savings and drop that, it would definitely be a plus, but I could live with it.
Counselor Sargent?
I agree with Counselor Grant, but to start, we're trying to develop a reserve fund, and I think that the 250, or whatever the number was, was a decent... fund, and I think that the 250, or whatever it was, the number was, was a decent amount, because should we have an issue that we need to draw upon that fund, $125,000 doesn't go very far.
And the only argument you'll get from somebody on this and not me is that, you know, why are you putting money into a reserve? Why doesn't somebody else hit their own paper? That's the old argument to those, about having reserves. So, you know, you haven't had to spend that on policing, well, then you should reduce my taxes, because essentially, you've overtaxed me for the previous year below. That wasn't intentional, it's just because they weren't stepped up.
Chances are, in 2021, we will be using that money, because we'll probably go from the 70% cost of policing to 90% if we break that 15,000 population barrier. And that is another purpose of that reserve. So it could be used, and I think that's a quarter million dollar increase a year.
What did it now?
All right, so seeing no further, unless there was further comments or suggestions on other solutions additions, then we'll go back to staff with the direction that we received this plan, the first draft with the deletion of that project in 2017 that's been highlighted, the Balmoral Golf Course sidewalk project. Any further, is there a move to that effect?
Second.
And any further discussion? Seeing done, all in favor? Motion's carried.
I wouldn't mind hearing from a few others as to what they think of our 2.7. Be easier if this wasn't the room they should be in before you're talking.
2.7 is, I mean, I guess the one way you can look at this is, I know many different municipalities deal with this, but, you know, we're looking at our operations, but we're also spending a lot of money on capital. And that is the infrastructure challenge all communities have. We have reinvested in infrastructure, we'll continue to do so as we release or eliminate debt, we'll continue to do so again. So whether you call that, you know, sort of a cost of living increase plus infrastructure, inflation rate is somewhere in the 2% range. Right now, it's 2.7, you know, you could easily justify that 2.7, or whatever it is, 0.75 is a necessary investment in our infrastructure. Of course, we have levers to those funds to a large extent with other grants and the gas tax money.
Your worship, the other point I'd make is that Council gets to revisit this every year. Every year, we do a five-year plan and roll forward from year to year. So you can always, next year, look at the 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 21 years and decide if you still want 2.7, or if you have more resources then. If we have another good financial year in a row, you may be able to step back from that just a year.
The other thing that's worth pointing out is, to the extent that infrastructure funding does get fast tracked and brought forward, there are a number of shovel-ready projects in here that staff has spent a lot of time on design and working towards getting those done. So those kind of opportunities, as they come up either this year or next year or the following years, are always there for further grant opportunities. We do have that one, big one for this year, we're hopeful, but there may be others. And you got to have, you know, essentially, your skin in the game to be eligible for. I didn't see anywhere in this report, Mr. Parks Director, the capital side for the pickleball. I assume that's because we don't know...
Your worship, it is. It is there in 2020. Because we don't have the design report, or we don't have geotechnical, I had to use one of my WAGs. You will recall that that's an acronym that stands for Wild Fosterior...
Other words.
Yes.
Engineering, okay.
So it's under Recreation Engineering Projects in 2020. I've assumed $150,000. That could be wildly out. We'll know more as the year progresses. And you'll note that I've assumed that there's a partner contribution of two-thirds to that project. So our commitment would be 50, and the partner contribution would be 100.
All right. But there's more to follow, and that was a good one. All right, anything further, any further comments?
Well, I just think it's important you touched on a little bit, but we actually do do a lot of asset management in our town, and the regional district has a lot of stats. And our debt is so much lower than Courtney's, I think we were five times lower or something in Courtney's part of debt's concern per capita. And it's because we actually take a little bit more of a tax hit sometimes, but we put it back into our asset management plan. So I think in the long run, that really pays in good ways, and so, you know, we've really kept up with that. So, I mean, we could certainly drop a lot of those things, like other communities don't do a lot of that. And we could probably come up with a much cheaper budget, but I don't think for the future, it's really, really the right thing to do, so... That was a bit of a shocking stat we saw, we saw that, yeah. So, in a good way.
All right, seeing nothing further, I think we guess we did go on the receipt, and then we'll come back to this in a couple of weeks' time for further comments and deliberations. And then a letter just for receipts.
Who received it?
Thank you. And our receipt then, all's in favor? Motion's carried. And this is an engagement process that the provincial government is working on, as you may recall, the Action Leadership Plan that they're working towards, there's a public consult that may now underway. They are seeking some specific comments, and of course, based on our previous instructions under the CARAT program. So I assume that staff would receive this and comment on this as they can, talking about everything from transportation right through public engagement. So I don't expect any specific input at this time, but is that something that staff can...
Yeah, we'll review it in greater detail.
All right, so we've received that, and so nothing further coming to court. Any motion to adjourn?
Move.
Favor?
Okay.